Okay, we'll now move to item three, the adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda of Thursday, March the 14th, as presented and recommended.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Vanderbilt, second by Ed, to approve the agenda of March the 14th, as presented and recommended. Discussion? Objections? Motion carried. Item four, and there's nobody there on item four, and the call to the public. Item five, discussion items. Item number one, Sonoyta Library reopening. It's an update, Juanita?
Yes, thank you. It was a marvelous day. It was very well attended, 50 to 60 people were there. We had representatives from the county, the county supervisor Bruce Bracker, the manager. And of course, we also had the workforce people that were there. Ida Senna spoke. And it was good to see community members, and not only did they come, but they checked out books with the analog version rather than the computer because it wasn't set up yet. And we noted that it's expansive. There's a lot of, I guess, progress we can anticipate with more book purchases and furniture for the open space that is now going to be, we hope, maybe occupied by more bookshelves. And we've been thinking about creating a children's nook also in the library. So lots to think about and interact with the community. It was a good event, and I was glad to see so many people there and the support of the community and the county.
Brian?
Daniza, can you tell us about, you told me you were going to put into your budget some money for furniture for the, can you tell me a little bit about that? How much you're thinking about, or any, what's your figures?
Yeah, that's what I've been working on the past couple of weeks right now. I'm going to be asking the county since, through the IGA for $50,000, not just for furniture for Sonoyta, but also to replace some of the shelves and shelves and some chairs in Rio Rico in Tubac.
Say it again, how much money?
50,000.
50,000? From the county?
Yes.
Well, it's not from the county, though. It's not from the county. This is a budget that's-
Well, no, but that's exactly what you said.
Oh, okay, but it's, that's not, the budget goes, is a city budget, and whatever the total of the library, it's split 50/50 between the city and the county. So if you put in $50,000 for new furniture, half of it is funded by the city and half of it is funded by the county.
If it, and like-
If you put in 100,000, then it's a, then they would put in 50.
When I do the reports on, in the capital expenses, how it's worked in the past couple of years, just because this is new to me too, I do say, what is for what? When it's for the main library, it's, I put that in. When it's for Sonoyta, I put that in. So just to clarify things.
Yeah. No, your item, individual item line expenditures, that's what you're talking about. I understand that. I refer to the total budget, whatever, your total, that's split. Okay, anything else, Brian?
No, thank you.
Ed? Christian?
Yeah, I just had a question about when Miguel came and did his presentation about the update or the upgrade of the software. I was just wondering where that-
No, no, that's not, we're not on that subject. Oh, okay. This is only Juanita's presentation.
Okay.
Juanita, thank you very much, and thank you for pitching in for me and all that, because I appreciate that. And I had heard comments that everything had turned out very well. Thank you, Juanita. Okay, let's move on to item number two, library board president candidates for vote. I also forgot to mention that Anna Dawn is also attending this meeting by video conference. She's in Washington DC, but she's attending the meeting through video presentation. Anna, go ahead on your library board president candidates.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So there were two nominations for president on the Google survey. And I was nominated, being world renowned author Juanita Haba. So there were two people nominated to become the next board president.
Anna, can you just stop, can you stop walking for a little bit there? Or slow your pace, and then tell us, because you're huffing and puffing, and we're having a hard time understanding you now. Go ahead and repeat what you just said.
Okay, so there were two candidates, me and the world renowned author Juanita Haba.
Okay. Alrighty, so then we have two candidates now for president, okay? And Juanita brings out a point on our bylaws, so there's clarification on this. The person that will be, that's elected president is going to be for the month of June, July, and August. Then when you have the elections again, according to our bylaws for officers, that person is up for election, the position is up for the full term. What you're doing right now is basically filling my term when I leave at the end of May. Does everybody understand? So we're clear? Okay. All right, so we have two nominations. Go ahead.
May I withdraw?
Yes, you can.
Yes, I would like to withdraw, and I would like to make a nomination-
Go ahead.
-of Brian Vanderbilt.
Okay, that's-
So we have two candidates.
Okay, there's no problem.
Thank you.
So we have two nominations, like we did before. One nomination is Anna Dawn, the second nomination is Brian Van der Voelt. Okay. On nominations then, we will go through a motion. So anybody want to make a motion, or I'll entertain a motion? Well, we're going to vote on both of them and see how the vote turns out. This is for, I'll entertain a motion that for president, effective June the 1st through September the 1st, for Brian Vanderbilt.
So moved.
Motion by Juanita?
Second.
Second by Ed? Okay, we're going to take a roll call vote. Judy? Don't forget Anna. Okay. Yeah.
I don't think she heard you.
No, I don't think-
Anna, your vote, please? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Delsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
And this is for?
For president.
Anna?
Oh, okay.
There's-
Yes.
Brian?
No, I won't know on the motion.
Oh, there's not very many.
I'm sorry.
So, oh, there are six of us here, huh? Okay, so it's three to three.
Five voting, five a vote, anyway.
No, there's six votes. There's, there's five of us here, and there's one there.
Did you vote?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't do that.
Dr. Verona, I think I misunderstood.
I didn't vote.
Brian didn't vote.
Oh, Brian?
Brian didn't vote.
Did Ed vote?
Well, how did you say there's three, three then?
No, three yeses, two nos, but I did not count Mr. Vanderbilt because he is the nominated per party. Is that correct?
No, he gets to vote.
He does, okay.
Yeah, he gets to vote.
My apologies.
Everybody has a vote here. Yes, that's okay. Go ahead and ask Mr. Vanderbilt.
My apologies, Mr. Vanderbilt. I would like your vote, please.
In the affirmative, yes.
Thank you. And the ayes have it for Mr. Vanderbilt.
The ayes have it, okay. So the final vote was?
Three.
Yeah, I was confused, I'm sorry. Yes, my vote was for Anna.
Yeah.
Oh, you can correct your vote.
Yes, I'd like to correct my vote. My vote was for Anna.
Okay, so what is it now?
Sorry.
One moment. Just finalize this.
Oh, it's probably three, three.
It's three, three. It'd be three, three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, the first vote then for Mr. Vanderbilt goes three to three. All right, now we're going to go ahead and vote for, take the second nominee, which is Anna Dawn. I'll entertain the motion to, for the nomination of Anna Dawn for president of the board, effective June the 1st through September the 1st.
Motion and second?
Nobody?
Okay.
Are you entertaining a motion, or do you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion, yes.
Okay, so there's a motion by Christian, is there a second to the motion?
Second, yeah.
Seconded by Ed Delsey. All right. Does everybody understand the motion then, what we're voting on now?
Now it is.
Okay. Go ahead, Judith.
May I have your vote, please, Mrs. Dawn?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Delsey?
Yes.
Mr. Vanderbilt?
No.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Havel?
No.
Dr. Verona?
Yes.
We have four ayes, or yeses.
So that's four to two. Okay, so then Anna gets the most, now she, she will be the president effective June the 1st. Her term ends, goes, runs through September the 1st, and in August, the board, according to the bylaws, will have another election for the officers. Is that correct, Juanita?
Yeah, that's-
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all set with it. Okay, Anna, you have that set then. Let's move on to item three. Proposed bylaws revision. Brian?
Thank you. All right, after, in our previous meeting in February, we reviewed pages one and two. I emailed the library director that I wanted to go back to page one briefly, and it doesn't appear that the agenda would restrict that, so I'm going to bring up the question I have. And that is the last paragraph on page one, where it deals with a potential conflict of interest. I'll read you the quotation. "Trustees must avoid situations in which personal interests might be served or financial benefits gained at the expense of library users, colleagues, or the institution. It is the duty of the trustee to disqualify themselves from the activity or the board immediately whenever a conflict of interest exists." My question arises because I don't know what a conflict of interest would be. This is an advisory board. We do not employ people, we do not enter contracts.
Right.
We don't have any legal decisions to make. So I brought up, so I'll propose a, for instance. Let's say that there is a board member who has a software program for circulation of books in the library. The governing body of the library, which would be the city council, enters into a contract with that individual for the software program. Is that a conflict of interest for this board? The contract is between the software company and the city council. It doesn't have anything to do with this board, but would that be a conflict of interest?
To me, there could be a potential, okay? But I'm not trying to pretend that I'm something that I'm not. But the only thing I could say is that at that time, on a situation like that, it would be prudent for the library director to make sure that she was issued a legal opinion to protect the member of the board in that case, to either the board, for the city attorney to give a ruling, it's appropriate, or there's a conflict, and it would be best that the board member stepped down from the position on the board. But that would be up to, that's Daniza's responsibility to protect the board and make sure she gets an opinion from the city attorney.
Well, that's, that makes sense. But I don't think the member would have to step down, the individual on the board would have to step down. He would just have to recuse himself from any potential discussion and/or votes. But in this case, but in this case, this board would not vote to staff, to hire or to contract with the software program.
You're correct, absolutely.
What it doesn't, what it doesn't do, and this is colloquialism, is it doesn't pass the smell test.
Right, but it would-
It's the appearance.
Yes. It doesn't pass the smell test, the optics are not good. It should always be that every board member has, is making a decision on the best interest of the community we serve. Now, but that's what I'm saying. That Daniza, if she sees that I, as a software manufacturer, are putting in a bid that's open to everybody, then she should go and tell, advise the city attorney, is there any conflict of interest? Because the member that's, of the low bidder is also on the board of the library. That would be her responsibility, and bring that back to us to tell us what that opinion is. But you're right, as far as we don't have any, we don't award contracts, your analysis is perfect. But to answer your question is that it's Daniza to get the opinion to protect the board member that's-
Okay, I wanted to have that discussion. Thank you.
Oh, I had something to say about that. I remember when we had an event at the library, and we had authors bringing their books and selling books. And as a board member, I did not sell my books, I gave them away. Because I did not want to take advantage of that event for selling my own books. So I think that's-
When you do that, then you avoid a complete cost.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, let's move on, Brian.
Thank you very much. All right. Then in the previous meeting, we discussed pages one and two, so now I will then move to page three. Section three, attendance. Three unexcused absences by a trustee may result in termination from the board. Comments by A.D., Anna Dawn, C.H. Christian Hernandez, and S.Y., not, not, not present. So can you tell me what your comments are, Christian and Anna?
So in my case, since I have just started, I just feel that the information, I mean, this is, um, it's important we participate in it. The library staff shares a lot of information for this. So I just feel like if we don't show up, try not to try, then it affects the whole community because we don't have all the information to make our decisions.
Okay, thank you. Christian, did you have something you wanted to say about this?
No, I believe, the last time this was brought up, I believe, my questions weren't.
Thank you, good. All right, anybody else have anything you want to say? Because I have something I want to add, but-
I do.
Go ahead.
I don't understand what unexcused means. There has to be a definition of the word unexcused, and then there has to be, who is going to, who's going to be the referee that says excuse, or the teacher that says excused or unexcused? See, that has to be defined. As long as it's not defined in here, I just don't see us. Because right now, if we have three absences, I would like to know, well, and who do I call? Do I call the chairman of the board? Do I call the library director? Who's going to determine? So there needs to be more clarity. The statement and its intent is, I understand the intent, but it's so broad that I don't think it would be affected at all.
Correct, and then I would add that, are we talking about consecutive absences? Or absent, three absent, or during a timeframe, or during a, an appointment, a two-year appointment? I think all those questions need to be redefined, more specifically defined. But I have a larger question to ask again regarding this very thing. First of all, this board does not appoint members, we know that.
Right.
They're appointed by the city council and the board of supervisors.
Correct.
So how would this board have the authority to terminate somebody if we don't have the power to appoint? You can't, if you have the power to do one, you've got to have power to do both. But if you don't have one, you don't have the other. Now, we may get through that by using the word may.
It's in there.
The board may, you know, could, the board could recommend to the governing body, the city council or the board of supervisors, that a, a position be terminated. But I don't think the board itself can make that, can terminate anybody.
Why don't we do this on this one, Brian? Why don't we just put it down? Because after we approve it, we can just leave this as a footnote and let the city attorney review it and see what they, because he might come back with your latter statement and just say, the board has no authority. Only the council and the board of supervisors can appoint and terminate.
Okay.
So the city attorney comes back with that opinion, there's no point in this.
Right, okay, that's fine, but I don't think we can, should approve the bylaws until we have that opinion from the attorney. You said that we could approve the bylaws, but I don't think we should approve it until it's all done.
No, I'm saying that we should go-
We should continue, we can continue the review, but I don't think we should vote to approve it.
Well, no, but I'm saying is, we can approve the bylaws, submit them, to them, but put as a footnote, we couldn't come to a consensus on this because we don't know the legality of it. Because I don't want to hold up this whole process for just eight, 10 words.
All right, subject to approval by the city attorney.
Right. Let him come back, but let us continue with the progress. I don't want 10, 12 words to hold up all the progress of this, what we're doing. Okay, let's go on to-
All right, moving forward then, the next section is elections. On the first section of appointment, there were comments by myself, Anna Dawn, Christian, and Juanita. Juanita, what were your comments about section one appointments?
We have shall, it was, the word may was in there, and we now have shall in this version.
Okay, so it says shall, okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, I'm not that keen on, oh, excuse me, I'm not that keen on the the term limits, but-
Well, there's no term limits on, well-
You mean that-
It's for one year and-
Oh, no, that's right, that's one year.
One year.
More than three consecutive terms.
Right.
So that would be three years. You could be-
Right.
Chair for three years.
And that's it. That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's all right.
Okay, thank you. Christian, your comments?
I've already had some clarity on-
Thank you.
-on that as well.
Anna, do you have any comments to make on this elections paragraph?
I do not. I don't have the bylaws in front of me, so I, um, you know, and whatever you all want, we could sit in the house with me.
Okay.
And the president just flew by, and his-
Thank you, Anna. All right, and I have no comments, so we'll leave.
Thank you.
Then I believe we can leave that paragraph alone. Moving further down the page, officers duties. I could read all that, but I don't see that there are any comments by any board members, no, no notes have been made, so I will just keep going. And down to article three, meetings, at the bottom of the page, turn the page. The minutes of, the bylaws have been corrected to read 10 a.m. Will be the starting time of the board meetings. And in the third paragraph, highlighted in yellow, "The library director will ensure that notice of the meeting is properly posted on official city and county board, bulletin boards, physical and online." Questions by Juanita Havel and Marcy Verona. Juanita?
I'm sorry, you're on the open meeting?
Arizona open meeting, right, that's correct.
No, that answered my question on an earlier one. That's been attended to, thank you.
Thank you. Marcy Verona?
The same thing as Juanita.
Correct, okay, no changes. The next paragraph, "In so far in order of meetings taken off," Marcy Verona, Brian Vanderbilt. What I, you want to comment, Mr. Verona, with what we did there?
That was this.
We, yeah, we deleted, oh, okay, that's what I wanted to do.
Yeah, I don't think that we need to have that, because we are more-
We go by the Robert-
We go by the Roberts rules, but we don't need to, like, financial reports, we don't really have a financial- We could say we have a budget update or anything, but I would prefer to remove that. Just leave it to the president to go ahead and put that in there.
All right. Then on to-
Are you, Brian?
I have no comments either.
Okay.
Moving on to page five. "The city of Nogales, mayor and council, the advisory board, if they would like, may make a recommendation." This refers to the library director. The library director is appointed by sole discretion of the city manager with confirmation of the city of Nogales, mayor and council, the advisory board. If they would like, may make a recommendation. Mr. Verona?
Yeah, I just put that in there because, you know, this is a position that, that oversees, that's like the chief administrative officer for us, and I just put down that if the library board would like to make a formal recommendation based on consensus or a vote of the board, if we, if that board wishes, they can do it. If they don't want to, they can do that though, too. It just says may.
And the second paragraph, "The library director is responsible-"
Oh, could I say something about that?
Of course.
Yeah. Now, this is new, the city manager was, I think in an earlier version, it was appointed, the library director is formally appointed by the city of Nogales, mayor and council. We've changed that to city manager.
Well, the mayor and council cannot legally appoint.
Okay.
It's the city manager that appoints, and then the charter was changed.
Okay.
It was a proposal that I made, but that then now the mayor and council have a vote to approve or to deny, to hire a director or terminate a director.
Okay, I think that you could take out, if they would like, and it would be just fine, to say the advisory board may make a recommendation. You know, we don't need to say if they would like.
Yeah, that's, that's better, that's better English.
That's fine. The intent of the-
Sure.
Is there.
Yeah.
The advisory board-
May make a recommendation.
May make a recommendation. Okay. Now, what happened to the part of the city man, is responsible? Okay, the director will recommend to the board any changes, okay. Which one were you talking about? Which one are we on, Brian?
We are now on the second paragraph, the beginning, the library director.
Yeah, the director is responsible to the city manager, and she is responsible to the city manager for the day-to-day management of the library. Not to us, to the city manager.
Correct.
For day-to-day.
Right.
And this is efficient implementation of the library system.
For the operations. Yeah. Right here, to the city manager.
Oh, the operation, okay.
And the third paragraph, "Library staff members are governed by the personnel manual of the city of Nogales. The director will recommend to the board of trustees any changes to the library policy and procedures manual." I have no comment.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, fine.
I'm fine.
All right. Article five, amendment of bylaws, the second paragraph, these bylaws shall, oh, we're going to remove this. "These bylaws shall take effect upon adoption by the trustees and shall constitute repeal of the previous bylaws." Reworded by Anna Dawn and Marcy- Reworded by Anna Doan and Marcy Verona.
Right.
So how do you want, you want it rewritten the way it is on the page? Or what, what did you? You said it says it was reworded, but how did you reword it? Or is this the rewording? Is this the rewording?
Yes.
I think that is the rewording, yes.
The earlier version said shall constitute repeal in entirety of the bylaws previously in effect. So you just took out.
Yeah.
In entirety previously.
Okay.
And then also, Brian, and then, oh, here it is, adopted this day, okay.
All right, well, that concludes the reading and revision of the bylaws as proposed.
Okay. So everybody's pretty clear. The next one is just the approval of the bylaws. Now, on the approval of the bylaws, I think that we can go ahead and approve the, we should go ahead and approve the bylaws, submit it to the city attorney as we have approved them. If the city attorney has any concerns that he get together with the library director, and then the library director will put it onto the agenda and discuss the concerns that they would have. But, you know, this is pretty, I think the only part that I have that we should submit as, as a footnote is page three, section three, attendance. That should just be as a footnote. It should not be included in the adoption of the bylaws. Let the city manager, because we're confused. We don't know the definition of unexcused. We don't know who's going to, who we have to report the absence to? And who's going to determine whether the absence is excused or not? So I don't want to hold up the whole progress now. So section three, we're just not going to approve that. We're going to submit it just as a footnote. Because the city attorney might say, you guys don't have anything to do with removing any member of the board. So I, I don't want to hold up it on. But I think we're ready for the rest of it to approve it and submit it to the city attorney. And then the city attorney, hopefully, you can bring it back at the next meeting.
To add to that.
Go ahead.
I believe in an earlier, in 2021 or 2022, when we did have a clause that said that they could be removed and a board trustee member could be removed without cause. And the attorney told us we could not put that in there.
And I, and I agree with that.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. So he didn't, you know, make a, make a judgment on this one, but, yeah, I think we should.
So what we'll do here is we'll move to item for the approval of the bylaws. Brian?
Yeah, item, yeah, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, you make the motion.
All right. Motion to approve the, the bylaws of the Nogales Santa Cruz County Public Library Board of Trustees, trustees as reviewed and approved by this board.
Okay, with the exception of section three, correct?
Correct, with the exception of.
Section three.
Section three. Article two, Board of Trustees, section three, attendance, which will be subject to the approval of the city attorney of Nogales.
Okay, I, with your wording confused me on that one. You said section under the Board of Trust, article two, Board of Trustees, section three? We're going to eliminate that. Is that correct, for clarity purposes here?
Okay, that's, yes.
Okay.
Correct.
We're going to submit it just as a side footnote for the attorney to review so we don't hold up the progress for all this. Okay, is there a second to Mr. VanderVeld's motion? Second by Mr. Delsey. The motion is to approve the bylaws of the Nogales Santa Cruz County Public Library Board of Trustees as was presented and corrected. And we have the final document here, with the exception, with the exception of article two, section three, that will be submitted to the city attorney as a footnote and brought back to us. Is there any further discussion on the, on the motion? Roll call, Judith, please. Start with Anna.
Mrs. Doan, your vote, please? Anna, may I have your vote, please?
She can't hear you.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Mr. VanderVeld?
Yes.
Mr. Delsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Henville?
Yes.
Dr. Verona?
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it.
Okay, they're just going to pass. Fill all of this in on the top first there. Here. You can sign this form on your, on your way out. And then we're going to move, item six. The date of our next meeting is April the 10th. And it is 10:36. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 10:36.
Excuse me.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Item six, date of next meeting, only to advise you, I will not be in attendance.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll make sure that we have a quorum on that.
Will we do agenda items right now or?
No, from, they have it on the last meeting. But if you have any future agenda items, we didn't put that on here because we wanted just to concentrate on.
Oh, no, I understand that for this meeting.
Uh-huh.
But for the next.
For the next meeting, there'll be a future agenda. But if you have an agenda item that you want to add, just get together with Daniza to put it on.
Okay.
We're very open and transparent. Okay, so before we go to the adjournment, Mr. VanderVeld, thank you for all of your efforts to helping us coordinate getting these bylaws updated. All right, so then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at 7:38. I'm sorry, 10:38.